Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. Okay, at this time we'll have the invocation by Susan Emery, the Community Development Director, and I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, this evening we earnestly seek your guidance and direction as we make important decisions for our community. Help us to be wise, compassionate, and discerning in all we do. Bless all who are here this evening as we join together in celebration. Be with our leaders and be with our residents too. We ask for sustained hope and comfort during this season of reflection, remembrance, and rejoicing. Amen.
And please place your hand over your heart and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of the greatest country in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll have oral communications for the certification of the election results only. Any other items that you want to discuss will be later on, but this is strictly at this time for the certification. Senator Lou Correa.
Representative.
I hear that he's on his way, but I don't think that we can wait for him.
No.
Okay, we can go ahead without him.
Good afternoon. I'm Queen Tran, representative with Senator Lou Correa, and congratulations, Councilmember meeting today, and he has a resolution to Mr. William Danton and his source appreciate about your candidate during a lot of years. And thank you, Bill Danton, and please receive your honor about Senator Lou Correa.
Thank you.
Right here is the official one, if you want to vote, just.
Sorry, Deena.
That's okay. Let me take this out.
She's not running for reelection, so I can go ahead and do that. Don't get upset. Okay.
It's underway at the declaration.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Okay, then we'll go to the Declaration of the Results.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that you adopt your resolution reciting the fact that the municipal election held November 6th and declaring the results in such matters as provided by law.
Okay, thank you, and I also closed oral communications on this matter. Okay, is there any comment or...
Motion.
Motions. Move, we approve. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And, Mr. Mayor, before you and Mr. Beard leave the dais, it's customary to provide you an opportunity to address the audience at this time, so Mr. Beard.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to extend my congratulations to the winners of the last election, be it Mayor Broadwater, Councilmembers Jones, Councilmember Van, and for me, oh, and my best wishes to Mayor Dalton, truly the people's mayor, and leaving a legacy of leadership, as was described at your reception, and how true and fitting. For me, while on this council, it's been a rewarding and worthwhile experience, working with others to make a positive difference in our community. It has been a distinct honor and privilege to serve and represent my fellow citizens. Garden Grove is a family-oriented town with good schools, safe neighborhoods, low taxes, and quality public services. It's been a very rewarding experience in working with citizens, city staff, and public officials to keep it that way. Our rich, diverse, and proud heritage as a community reflects the commitment and dedication of both past and present residents, organizations, institutions, businesses, public servants, and civic leaders working together. This is a legacy that I'm proud to have been a part of and hope to continue being a part of. In the future going forward, Garden Grove has a rich history and possesses many key assets to build on for the future. This incoming council and city staff are very capable and well-suited to tackle these issues and build upon the progress we've made, the city has made. And I wish them the very best in working to keep Garden Grove a safe, economically sound, family-oriented, rich in its diversity, with an informed citizenry, and well-maintained with a wonderful quality of life. Again, it's been an honor and privilege to be a part of this great city, and I will do my very best, and it's my intention to do my very best, to carry on with supporting the community in the future in whatever capacity I can contribute and serve. Again, thank you so very much.
Well, in some ways, I feel like the old gray mayor. Not supposed to laugh that loud. No, that's okay. No, I, yeah, I've spent in public service about forty years in the city of Garden Grove, starting out as a police officer for twenty-six years, then city council for six years, and then mayor for eight years. And it's probably been the best forty years of my life. Not probably, it is, it has been, the best forty years of my life. I've met a lot of wonderful people, I've worked with a lot of wonderful people on the council. Sometimes we disagreed, but we did it with dignity, and we were not afraid to voice our opinion, even if it was different than the person sitting next to us. And that's really what a democracy is all about, and that's really what, which you have to have, I think, to make the council in any city work. You have to be able to agree, but you also have to be able to agree to disagree. It's been forty years I'll never forget. I'm going to be around, I doubt very seriously I'll be on that side criticizing people up here unless they do something that maybe I need to criticize them for. But I'll tell you, there's some great people up here, and I congratulate the other people that are being sworn in today, and I urge each and every one of you out there to consider public service, because you really can accomplish quite a bit for your own community, and you're truly a part of making it what it is. And Garden Grove's a great place to live. My kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids live here, and I have no intention of moving just because I'm off the council. I'm staying here, and it's going to be hard for you to get rid of me. In fact, you won't be able to get rid of me. But I want to thank everyone for their cooperation. The community has been great, the Vietnamese community, the Korean community, the Caucasian community, everybody has treated me wonderfully, and I'm going to miss it, there's no question about it. But thank you, and God bless all of you.
We will be breaking for a reception, and I think it's the B-room, and then we'll come back in and we'll swear the new council in, so enjoy the reception.
Guess I'll shut this here until we go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do not leave the room.
Chris. Oh, okay.
John Clark put this adjournment scene die or something. Signy die. I have no idea what that means, I'm so sorry. All right.
So we're going to swear people in.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do it now. All right.
Wait.
I started out there and you told, okay.
Okay.
We rehearsed it, this is just an act. We're not making any errors, okay? We know exactly what we're doing.
You stay exactly where you are.
Steve, you sit down too.
Bruce, you now get to take the center seat. You're still here.
So can you switch places with the mayor?
Well, I think, okay, he's going to come down and actually get sworn in. And I'm not going to, I'm going to stay out of this. Too many cameras.
I was saving it for you.
Thank you. You caught me. Peggy up here. Yeah, Peggy, come on up here. I should, nobody else steal your seat.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bruce Broadwater.
I, Bruce Broadwater.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stephen Jones.
I, Stephen Jones.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and...
Defend.
...the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I guess we'll go on this side here. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Chris Phan.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we're going to ask all the new members, including myself, to make some comments. And twenty years ago, I was sitting in the same seat that Van was setting, that Chris is sitting in tonight. I was as scared as he is tonight. Anyway, Chris, you get to speak first, so tell us how wonderful it is.
Well, first off, I'd say thank you so much to Mayor Dalton for giving me my swearing and oath. I hope, sir, to follow in your footsteps. Your leadership has been amazing. Thank you. Also, I want to say thank you to my family who's here. My mom flew in all the way from Indiana to be here with us tonight, and so did my dad. I want to thank you both for all your love and support through the years. I know we would have made it this far without your love, so thank you. Also, to my sister Jennifer and my brother-in-law Paul, who can't be here with us tonight, but they're here with me in here in spirit. My younger brother Long, who is on the front row here in the military uniform, he's actually currently down in Coronado trying to be a Navy SEAL, so hopefully he'll be successful here within the next year or so. And also, I thank you to the rest of my family, to Mathieu, to Gao Bay, to Ma Bay. We call these names, Gao Ma, because it's a term of endearment in our Vietnamese culture. And also, I want to thank to my sister Yip and her family for all their love and support for this past year. As you guys know, to make anything happen, you need a team of people to make it happen. I was very blessed and honored to have three very dedicated friends who were there with me from the beginning, and that, as you can see over there, is Sergeant Mike Tran. Come on over, Mike. We have a plaque for you here that my brother will present to you, along with his girlfriend Jeanette, who was always there with us, and Suzie. Now, these three friends of mine, they were there with me from the beginning, and also had to by the door. We walked all over ten months of Garden Grove, and as you guys know, being from the military, we don't have a lot of money, but what we do have a lot of is of a spree decor and a lot of will, and so these dear friends of mine, they walk with me through the heat, through the rain, to make it all possible for us to be here tonight. I also want to thank my friends from the University of Phoenix who are here tonight, Mr. James Henderson, Phil, thank you so much for being here both. My brother-in-law, who's going to be my future brother-in-law here soon, Harry in the back there with the camera, thanks, Harry. I want to thank Kathy, our city clerk, for all her love and support through the whole election. As you know, it's a very difficult process and a very detailed process, and without Kathy's guidance, it's been very hard for me to get through it, so thank you, Kathy. I look forward to working with you, Matt, and everybody on the city council staff. It's been an amazing year for me to get to know you as friends, but I look forward for the next four years to get to know you better. Also, congratulations, Bruce, for getting re-elected to mayor, and also look forward to working with you, Steve, and getting to know you better, and Deena, thank you so much. So I have great friends and colleagues here to begin my tenure here on the city council, so I want to thank you everyone so, so much. And but lastly, I want to reserve the special thanks to all my friends in the community and to everybody who basically opened their doors and opened their arms, opened their hearts, to give me the faith and confidence to serve our city. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I have friends from far and wide, my Mathieu from Paris, and my uncle from Paris who came here for this occasion. I have friends Dee, Ally, JB, coming in from San Diego. So the love is profound, guys, I really appreciate it. I want to thank Anmin for being here with Sister Catherine, he's from the Fountain Valley City Council, so thank you, brother men, for being here. And thank you to the press and everyone. If I have not named you personally, you know you're in my hearts, and I deeply appreciate all the love and support you have given me. And last but not least, I was debating about, should I take this next step or not, but I talked to our city clerk and our city lawyer, and they gave me the green light. So with that, I wanted to share with the community a bit of great news. I was very blessed to found the love of my life just this past January 2010, and we started out as friends, but we've become a lot more. And so on this very momentous occasion, I want to take the opportunity to introduce the city and everyone here to my future, hopefully, fiancee, Ms. Cindy Pham, who's sitting on the front row. And at this time too, I would like to, perhaps this may be the first for the city, but take this occasion to ask a very personal question of you, Em, if you could. Can you please stand up to the podium for there for me for one second?
Good.
So here goes nothing, I hope I don't fub this one up, guys. Here we go.
Oh, wow. I didn't know that's for me.
Oh, I don't know.
And the good news was she said yes, so thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Steve's going to speak next, I don't think he's going to top that.
Yeah, I'm afraid I can't top that, so I just want to say thanks. It's a thrill and an honor to receive the validation of being re-elected, and I just want to hand all the credit in the world to a very deserving Chris Phan, who just worked very hard, walked neighborhoods, and really, really earned and deserved his election to this council, so I'm excited to have him on. He's a very intelligent, bright-eyed, and positive-minded guy, and I'm looking forward to doing great things in this city together.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, it's exciting for me to be here tonight. I was the mayor for, from 1994 to 2004, and stepped out for eight years, and now I am back. Back in the future, is that what you said the other day, Matthew? Anyway, I certainly got a lot of people to thank. First of all, my wife, Peggy. I married one of the nicest girls in the world, and she has remained that for forty-two years. In fact, there used to be a councilman on the council here, and his wife literally hated me, and, but she, he, she loved Peggy. It really worked well for Peggy. Anyway, I want to thank, I see my Quanis brother sitting back there. Take a bow, guys, I really appreciate all the work you did for me. I see the president and the treasurer of the Vietnam War Museum sitting out there. Stand up, guys, stand up, General, please.
One thing to go to speech. The idea for a museum, a Vietnam War museum in Garden Grove for the nation was Bruce's idea.
And you know, there was one person in my past who was certainly my mentor, and he, I would not be here tonight, I would have never been here if it wasn't for him, and he's not with us anymore, but his wife, Lee Butterfield, is sitting out there. Why don't you take a bow, Lee? I think we're coming out of the economy, I think Garden Grove's going to turn around and go great financially. Been through a tough, tough years. Bill had it a lot tougher than I had it, and I understand, he pulled it, he pulled it out tremendously, and we're certainly thankful for Bill. And we're going to, we're going to go forward, and it's going to be like a train in the night, just ma, 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 ma. So I'm excited, we got a lot of good things to do, a lot of good things are going to happen, and I thank you very much. And we're going to go in and have a recess for reception, it says right here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will make convenience Garden Grove City Council, and we will go to poll communications, which will be held simultaneously with the successor agency and industrial authority at the same time.
Okay, we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Pham?
Here.
Mayor Prochem Wynn?
Here.
Okay, I have a card here for Senator Lou Correa. Is Lou here?
He's still in the reception.
I think he's working up votes for two years from now. Okay, John O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. First of all, I want to congratulate you guys on your successful campaigns. Well done. I know you guys have a heart for Garden Grove, so I know you're going to do well. As you know, I was a candidate for this past election, and I enjoyed it thoroughly. I wanted to let you know that I am on the list for appointees, so if you can't figure it out, I would be happy to take that position, more than willing to serve. I wanted to thank people that supported me in this campaign, and just thank them publicly for their support. And basically, just wanted to thank you guys for what you do. I don't know. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Senator Lou Correa.
Mr. Mayor, good members of the city council, just wanted to come by and, first of all, thank Mayor Dalton for service to this great city, and all of those that have come before you. And also congratulate all of you that have decided to take on the democratic process and debate the ideas and run for office. Congratulations to all of you. And finally, just wanted to continue to pledge my support to work with you in Sacramento in addressing those issues that are so important to our constituents. And, Mr. Mayor, you and I had a few words discussing the state of the state and the state of the city. And again, let's continue to work together. Fiduciary duty to our constituents, let's take care of business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. James T. Barra.
Hi, good evening. I'm James T. Barra. I ran in 2010 in the city council race as well, finished runner-up with about 14,000 votes. And recently, against Mr. Broadwater, which was a mistake, and I finished runner-up with about 6,000 votes. So, I wanted to come and reintroduce myself and tell you a little bit about myself. You know, I have a master's degree, which is very difficult, as Mr. Jones knows. I started two businesses here in Garden Grove that are running, up and running very well. And I spent the last, I spent 24 years in the military, which gave me a lot of good management experience. You know, going into a battle zone gives you, you know, there's a lot of life and death situations, you know that? So, it makes you grow up quickly. The last 10 years, I've been a teacher, and with my credential through the state of California. And I wanted to make you aware of me running for the next open city council seat, and congratulate you, Mr. Broadwater, Mr. Jones, Mr. Pham, on everything we did. And say thank you to the people who supported me during my campaign. I am humbled by that. And thank you again.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fat Buoy.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater council members, and my fellow Garden Grove residents. I stand before you as an applicant to fill Mayor Broadwater's vacant, located council seat. First of all, I would like to congratulate Mayor Broadwater, Steve Jones, and Chris Phan on winning their respective seats. I was definitely runner-up in the November 6 election, and coming in well ahead of the fourth-place winner by about 1,100 votes. During my campaign, I had an extraordinary privilege of meeting some of the greatest people in this city. Hardworking, humble folks with the very best of the American spirit. And it is a highlight of our campaign, and their life story inspired me a lot. They are neighbors who serve our country and help pave the way that formed the foundation of free elections. We share a deep gratitude to and affection for this great nation. We each must do our part so that our city, our nation as a whole, will experience upward progress in representative government and freedoms. And I am proud to be a resident of this great city. We are a city that embrace diversity, appreciate cultural differences, and believe in free enterprise. From day one of our campaign, I shared with many of you my desire to make a difference, and that has not changed. We didn't win the election, but I have over 12,000 reasons why I will continue to serve our city in any official or unofficial capacity. So, to my neighbors and friends in Garden Grove, appointed or not appointed, I will continue to be a positive force to advocate and foster a better Garden Grove for all residents. I came from an oppressed country where dreams were just simply dreams. But in this country, this great country, opportunities are abundant, and dreams do come true. I am a proud American. I want to say thank you to all of the men and women in uniform who gave me the opportunity to fulfill my American dreams, and I would like to give back to whatever I have received. There are two main reasons, there are two main qualifying factors as to why I respectfully believe I should be appointed to the vacant seat. Most importantly, in 1990, the Garden Grove residents passed Measure B with a solid 52.5% vote that directed the city council to appoint the runner-up to a vacancy created as a result of an election. Since 1998, there have been exactly four different occasions our city council had the opportunity to appoint the runner-up in accordance with Measure B. But instead, we choose to ignore the will of the people and appointed for individuals who didn't even run for the seat to begin with. I believe that this is not right. Secondly, my background and qualification are as follow. I am the founder and CEO of NetResult, a 16-years-old technology and management consulting corporation located here in the city of Garden Grove. NetResult provides software solutions to help government agencies and large corporations to better qualify, to better the quality and the efficiency of their business in a paperless environment. My work is well-recognized. We won the Best Innovation Award at the Government Technology Conference, a solution which saved taxpayers of California millions of dollars. And in college, I had many odd jobs to make amends while pursuing a critical major in mathematics, physics, and electrical engineering. I have been a strong supporter of We Give Time for the last 10 years, and my years of volunteering and community involvement have helped me to understand the needs of our community, and that has allowed me to serve effectively as a planning commissioners for our great city for the past four years. And finally, I have great passion for our city, and I look forward to having an opportunity to contribute my expertise and do all that I can for the betterment of our communities as a city councilman. Thank you very much.
Peter Pacifica.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Former Mayor Dalton, Mayor Broadwater.
Whatever.
City Council, thank you very much. As all you know, I'm Peter Pacifica, graduate of '69. I'm here on behalf of my two brothers. I'm here to say that I am leaving, saying goodbye. I'm leaving California, Garden Grove in Orange County. We lost our home 57 years last year due to a court order. We live in a motel somewhere, and nobody helps us or hates us at all. Churches, friends, et cetera. The Garden Grove Police bless them. I've been with my brother a few times. He's disabled, not a troublemaker, just wants to work and make friends. So, we are leaving Garden Grove, Orange County in California, and moving somewhere back east, maybe eastern Canada. Also, if you like Garden Grove, you should name it House City or Building City. There's no gardens here, no grove, no strawberries, so why have a strawberry festival? Dr. Cook would be furious if he saw the town he had founded in 1874 look right now. So, I just want to say thank you very much. Goodbye. God bless you, and thank you for everything, and Merry Christmas to all of you. God bless you.
Pham Chee Tiam.
Pham Chee. Chee.
Ah, that's her name.
Good evening, all council members.
Speaking of, there you go.
Good evening, all council members. Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Broadwater and all councilmen. My name is Chief Phan. I am a U.S. citizen, and I am Garden Grove resident. Like many Garden Grove residents, I vote for Mr. Fat Buoy because of his long-time involvement in the community and always try to make our community a better place to live for us. I was sad to hear Mr. Fat Buoy didn't win the seat, but I was very proud to know he received more than 12,000 votes and was the first runner-up. Many of us voted for Mr. Bi and were glad to know that could apply for this election. However, there is a reason that the city council is going to ignore the people vote on Mr. Bi and upon someone, someone else then runner-up, Mr. Fat Buoy. For those who come from the place government like me, we have tremendous respect and aspiration for freedom, liberty, and democracy process for people vote. We proud, pacified, and election with understanding that our vote will be counted honestly and collectively make difference. I recently learned that council majority may elect someone else who had not even run, or maybe even Mr. Chee Bi, who lost to Mr. Fat Buoy by 1,100 votes. I hope and pray this is not true. I cannot understand and how the council would choose someone else against the wish of the electoral vote of the people in Garden Grove. This would seem much like how the communist government in our former country do business and claim that's a party. And the party know that it's a best for people, that the people don't know any better. I sincerely hope, pray that council will respect and vote with and upon Mr. Fat Buoy, the first runner-up and well-qualified candidate who has rightfully earned this seat. Not just because of Mr. Fat Buoy run for the Mr. Bi, but his hard work and education over here in my Garden Grove, good for city, for family, and for all the people grow up. The city council asked the resident what they want them to do when there was a vacancy and put into citywide vote for Mr. Bi. The resident have the respect, and now ask the city council to respect our vote on matter until there is another vote someday that advise differently. You are on elect, and please present us, please do so honestly and respectfully. Thank you so much, and Happy New Year.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to you and to the newly-elected councilmember Phan, and to our re-elected councilman Jones. Adaloe to councilwoman Wynn. This is a great responsibility that you've taken on to lead our city into the next two years, and hopefully, it's going to be a successful campaign that you're embarking on. There are a lot of other people that were interested in seeking the seats that you're sitting in right now, and they wanted to commit themselves to service to our community. But there's only so many seats available in an election, and the voters have chosen. Now, in the event that these people were not given the opportunity to serve on the city council, there is another opportunity available to them. Matter of fact, it's available to all citizens of Orange County that are 18-years-old, have a working knowledge of the English language, can communicate in written form. That is the Orange County Grand Jury. This is an honorable and much-needed service to our community. Now, it is possible, but there may be reports that the city disagrees with. This happens. But the people who work on the grand jury work diligently to try to provide the most accurate information they can to the public. That is their responsibility. And I urge anyone who is interested in serving for the next upcoming grand jury, which starts in July, to look into applying now. The application period is from now until about the second week of January. Now, if you are chosen for the grand jury, and it's an extensive progress, an extensive progressive application process that you have to go through, including interviews with sitting judges, and an application that includes nine pages. But if you're willing to put in the effort, it is well worth it, because the places that you will go are amazing, the things that you will see about our county, and the people who are serving us in many capacities will open your eyes to what can be done and what should be done in our county. So, again, now is the time, if you're interested in applying to the grand jury, you can look it up online and download an application. So, thank you for your attention.
Quang Tran. Maybe I've seen it wrong.
Quan Tran.
We actually have a special surprise for Councilman Chris Phan for an award of appreciation for his dedicated service and his friendship, and for actually giving us all this mentorship all these years, and for allowing us to assist you with your campaign. So, with that, I thank you, and on behalf of our staff.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Come on, Chris.
Why don't you come forward and give that to Chris?
Thank you so much, guys. What a pleasant surprise. And Mike, thank you for your leadership. I just wanted to just let you guys know that Mike here was the top 99 percentile for the LSAT to law school, and he's got a full ride to UCI law school. So, my props to you, Jeanette, Susie, thank you so much. Thanks, guys.
Hin Fu. Hin Fu.
First of all, I want to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and to member, council member. My name is Hin Fu. I am a U.S. citizen and a resident of Garden Grove. So with that, I thank you and on behalf of our staff.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Come on, Chris.
Why don't you come forward and give that to Chris?
Thank you so much, guys. What a pleasant surprise. And Mike, thank you for your leadership. I just wanted to let you guys know that Mike here was the top 99 percentile for the LSAT to law school. And he's got a full ride to UCI Law School. So Mike, props to you. Jeanette, Susie, thank you so much. Thanks, guys.
Hin Fu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, I want to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor and to member, council member. My name is Hin Fu. I am a US citizen and a resident of Garden Grove. My family and many residents vote with more than 12,000 votes for Mr. Fat Buoi, who had come in third ahead of Mr. Chris Beare by 1,100 votes. We believe he, Mr. Fat Buoi, is the best for the council seats. And I just want the council to respect the election result and the democracy and upon Mr. Fat Buoi for this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Neil Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor Bruce Broadwater, and congratulations to Steve Jones, re-elected, and new Council Chris Phan. I have four one flower here. And I let you introduce your flowers to the mayor.
For the next City's Council.
Well, Chris, you brought so many surprise today. Well, congratulations to your new position as the City Council of Garden Grove, as well as, you know, we're looking forward for your wedding, hopefully sometime next year. And then just, you know, this is just only happened in America. When we could not believe that Chris Phan could, you know, first of all, he beat his fellowman Fat Buoi by at least more than 1,000 votes. But more than that, he even beat the incumbent Chris Beare, which I very friendly and proud to be a friend. And this is only happened in America. You know, our great constitution start with three words, three special word, "we, the people." And then when I saw Chris that, you know, starting that walking 10 minutes before the elections, he came to get to know the people, get the people to know him. And the same thing with all of the candidates that run for the campaign. They spend their time, their effort, send the information to the people so the people could learn about them. You know, we, to those who's born here, I mean, voting is just a matter of to register. And many people, you know, didn't want to, didn't register. And for those of us who came here as a refugee, to have, to be naturalized, this is very difficult. As a lawyer, I have been helping thousands and thousands of applicant to, you know, get naturalized. And, you know, I'd share with you one story like one of the sons who was imprisoned by the communists. And then he was able to come here to the HO program and he sponsored for his mom. And his mom, you know, 75 years old, still want to be naturalized. And I tried to help her. And when she got her certificate of yes citizenship, she asked me, "Help her to register." And she want to come out to vote. So people had to be naturalized, register, and then learn and be informed with what the candidate have related to them. And they come out and vote. And more than 12,000 people vote for Mr. Buoi, 13,000 vote for Chris Phan, 15,000 vote for Steve Jones, and more than 20,000 vote for you. So people come out and respect and learn and know who, what they want to choose to be the leader. So I ask, you know, the mayor, the City Council, to listen and respect to the people. We sit here and our men and women, you know, was out there right now fighting for our freedom and our democracy. And we saw that throughout the world, from Tunisia, Middle East, and right now in Syria, people sacrificed their lives just to want, to have the power to vote for their government. So we, so I ask the mayor and the City Council to respect and listen to the vote of the people. And I think that will be fair and justice to all. And I will sit and see who we elect one and whoever you vote, that one, I'm sure you voted for the best of the residents and the city of Garden Grove. Thank you, Mayor Bruce Broadwater.
Robin Macario.
Good evening, council and Garden Grove residents and staff. I'm Robin Macario. You have a difficult decision in front of you. There are many runner-ups that are on your list that were forwarded. I was the runner-up in 2008 and had the pleasure of doing the door-to-door walk and talk and listen to what the residents wanted. And, you know, it's amazing. You think that they're really concerned about the fiscal. Most of the time, they talk about things like, "I hate graffiti," things like that. So like in, since I wasn't appointed in 2008, I've still continued to be involved, to contribute. And I've been honored to serve on several of the commissions, be it traffic or the neighborhood commission or most recently on the Parks and Arts Commission. And I've put together public art mosaics that have helped to create some community pride. And I look forward to working with the council, whether it's on that side of the days or this side, and we continue to work with you and continue to improve our city. You've always been a very fiscally responsible city. And the improvements we've made along Harbor Boulevard have made our financial situation better. You know, I've gone to the meetings with regards to the Pacific Electric Rideaway and there's plans in the process to maybe see a light rail. I would so love to see that, to connect right through the middle of our city from LA to Santa Ana so that we can have that rail system, a public transport system. I think that those are things that will improve the city in general. I'd like to see more public art and involve our youth and I'm sure you're all receptive to that. I am a substitute teacher for our district, so I'm available to take times off, time off at will to do what's required in this very responsible position. I am a bilingual Spanish speaker. Necesitamos tener alguien que ahí que se puede hablar con casi medio de la gente en nuestra ciudad. Yeah? We need someone that can speak with that constituency. And we, and Dina, you could, you could use another woman up there sitting next to you, I think. I think I, last I checked, we're about half the population and that might work as well. So in one day, you can write, you can, you can put a runner-up, a woman and a bilingual Spanish speaker. I respectfully request your vote and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Anthony Flores.
Thank you, Mayor, again, and council staff. I'm Tony Flores. I came up tonight to speak about two or three things, so I'll try and get through this within five minutes. First off, I agree with some of the speakers as far as Measure B. I've been there before, many times before the appointment, speaking about Measure B. I, since its inception and vote on in 1990, I've always thought we should put the next, or the runner-up. Tonight, of course, if I'm supporting Measure B, then I'd be supporting Mr. Fat Buoi. I don't really know him that well, but we've had a few chats over the last few months. And I believe he would do a good job as a council member, just like I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Chris Phan. And I hope you stay true to your word because if not, I'll be hearing, he'll be hearing from me, etc. Any case, if not, then let's talk about, if we're not going to do that Measure B, then let's talk about the appointment. Let's talk about what you folks have talked about over the years, at least three of you. And maybe you have Mr. Phan, I don't, I haven't heard you say it just yet, but diversity, talking about diversity. We've yet to appoint a Hispanic, Latino, or whatever name we're being given these days. Haven't seen that happen yet. Mr. Broadwater, last talked to, last councilman, you said, you know, you should be more positive. Well, let's talk about some of that, the positive. I helped form the West Garden Grove Resident Association. I helped drive out some of the issues when the Rossier School came to our end of town. Help secure the sound wall. Went up to Sacramento to do that. Help save about 1,000 homes on the east end of town when eminent domain was an issue. Help form the Central Garden Grove Residents Association, or excuse me, Neighborhood Association, and also help them secure their signatures for the referendum. The majority of their signatures came from west of Knott. And also too, we've brought attention to over the years, beautification on Lamson. And it's been a long haul to get beautification on Lamson west of Knott. And we're finally getting that. But the West Garden Grove Resident Association has been instrumental in doing that. And now that we have grants and whatnot, we're moving that way. So we hope that you take a look at that. That's my service record. I could go on on the other things that I've done, but I'll cut it off right now. But let's talk about the rest of the appointment and the prognostication that's out there. We believe Mr. Chris Beare will probably be appointed again. And if that's happens, fine, so be it. But Mr. Beare needs to remember that there's other points of view out there. Not everything's personal. There has to be some healthy debate. Not everybody can just rubber stamp it. We have to talk about what's going on, what's good for the people, what's good for the citizens, the taxpayers. For example, I happen to be the only person that wrote an argument against Measure Y. Now, that argument, of course, was based on review of city budgets, city records, and city minutes. That's how I came up with my argument. And when I look at that and I see that there was close to 15,000 people that voted no on Measure Y, that says, well, there is some healthy debate. There are people that are looking, at least paying attention. And if I'd have made that an issue, if I'd have ran this time, that's 15,000 votes. That puts me well ahead of you, Mr. Phan. But any case, be that as it may, whoever gets appointed isn't going to be handed any favors. But again, if it's the person I think it's going to, I hope he pays attention to what he's done in the past and that he listens to what the people are talking about and what the people are saying. And like many people said here tonight, you know, America, and born and raised in Southern California. Haven't gone anywhere since. Mr. Broadwater, you're still there. I'm still here. We're going to be seeing a lot of each other, I'm sure, in the next few years. But any case, good luck to all of you. Merry Christmas, if I can say that. Happy holidays and a Happy New Year. But I'll be watching. Good evening.
Maureen Blackham.
I'm Maureen Blackham, 33-year resident of Garden Grove. Congratulations, two for you with an invitation to marriage. And for Steve Jones and Bruce, thank you for serving and congratulations. I'm going to keep it quick. Sorry, Tony, I think five minutes is way too long for any of us to talk. But I'm here to say that if you would go along with Measure B, I know when we had the candidates forum, Bruce said four times he voted with and four times he voted for an opponent. So you can stay true to that. Steve said the same thing. Chris, you said you would support the third highest in line. And we'll see this, it will be your first vote and see how it goes. But anyway, I just wanted to say we respect the process. One person that wasn't at the candidates forum that I still have a question about was Jenny Nguyen. I don't know how she stands. I guess we'll never know. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thay Ton.
Sorry, my big Vietnamese. Xin chào tất cả quý vị.
Good evening to all.
Tôi là gia đình tôi là một cư dân sống trong city Garden Grove.
Myself and my family is a resident of Garden Grove.
Gia đình tôi thấy nhận xét anh Fat Buoi là một người xứng đáng và chúng tôi cũng hy vọng rằng là những bước thế hệ thứ hai, thứ ba con cháu chúng tôi sẽ cố gắng làm những công việc tốt của các city chúng con cháu chúng tôi ở đây.
We realize that Mr. Fat Buoi is a qualified person and we wish that our next election would do the same.
Trong cuộc bầu cử chiếu bằng phiếu, nhưng anh Fat Buoi chưa đạt được ý nguyện. Nhưng hôm nay tôi có một ý kiến là tôi xin quý vị bằng trái tim và luật pháp của nước Mỹ, tức là tình và lý để cho không phải ở city Garden Grove và cả các city trung quanh và tất cả các báo chí họ nhìn và các người ta thấy được quý vị có một cái sự công chính nhất.
Well, Mr. Buoi did not win at the election, but today we hope that you with the heart and with justice would make a wise decision so that not only city Garden Grove, but all the cities nationwide would take a look at us as lessons.
Xin cảm ơn quý vị và chúc quý vị một mùa dáng xinh tốt đẹp và một năm mới đầy hạnh phúc.
Thank you very much for your attention. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mr. Leslie Lee.
Good evening. Thank you very much for calling my name now. As you know, I used to work for Rose Star Boris to Orange County for 10 years and retired from them. But now I'm speaking with you in the name of my organization, Vietnamese Community of Southern California. I'm the president of that organization. Congratulations, Mayor Bruce Broadwater, for get re-elected and Councilman Steve Jones got elected, re-elected. And Chris Phan, 3% happiness. Okay? You get elected to the new seat here and then you get the yes from the lady who you asked for her hand. And the third one, you get appointed as a deputy of the city attorney. Congratulations again.
Thank you back.
Thank you very much. Now, honorable members of this Garden Grove city, I would like to take about a minute to congratulate and show our admiration to your brave action and very historic decision you make during the November 27, last month's meeting to pass the Resolution 9152-12, not welcoming the Vietnamese Communist Party members or the government officials to come to Garden Grove. So may I ask Mayor Broadwater to come here with me and I would like to present you something, sir. This is to show our admiration to you on that action and this certificate of commendation presented to the council of the city of Garden Grove in honor if determination and unanimity passing the Resolution 9156-12 adopted on November 27, 2012, not welcoming members and or official of the Vietnamese Communist Party and or the government in the city. President, my name is Leslie Lee. Thank you very, very much, sir. And thank you very, very much, members of the council.
Thank you very much. I think it was a good thing to do. It was unanimous. And Bill Stemy back there was part of it. So thank you, Bill.
Thank you, sir. Now, I would like to ask your permission to present my, the main issue tonight for this second part of the meeting. Yes, you have heard a lot of opinions that the blank number there must be filled and the empty seat there must be filled. Yes, everybody looking for the third highest vote getters, Mr. Fat Buoi. He has served. He has served for the city of Garden Grove in the planning commission for years, and he own a business too. And he's capable to do the job. So, we would like to you, in the name of the majority of members of my organization who reside in Garden Grove, that give him a chance, give him that honor to serve, and after one term, see what happens. So, we think he's capable to do the job. So, we suggest that you vote yes to appoint him to this empty seat. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And before I step down, Christmas and New Year around the corner, may I say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you, particularly for you, a very, very happy year for you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Last but not least, Josh McIntosh.
My name is Joshua Zachariah McIntosh. I'm a fourth-generation Garden Grove resident. I'm gonna use my five minutes, I think, tonight. Payback. In 1920, the entire village of Brushy Knob, Missouri, packed up and moved to Garden Grove, California. We had received, I say "we" because I'm speaking of my family, and several other families that were founding families of this village or town at that time. We packed up our trucks, we moved over here like a bunch of okies, sort of across the nation, and we helped found...
We apologize to anybody who's here from Oklahoma.
Okay. We packed up and we moved to Garden Grove, California. We'd received a letter from a family member who'd come here earlier that stated, "The weather is just unbeatable, the soil is unbeatable, you can plant a seed and anything will grow, this is purely, this is heaven on earth, this is the greatest place to live." And that convinced my family, and as I stated, the entire village of Brushy Knob, Missouri, to pack up and move across the country at one time. They settled here in what is called downtown Garden Grove, in our small historic area, well, what's left of it. My great-grandfather, Zachariah McIntosh, built a modest home on farmland that he purchased from George Rayburn, one of the wealthiest men in the town at that time. He had a small farm, as did many of the settlers from Missouri that came out here. Some of them had rather large farms, taking up much of this area. And as generations went by, we saw the farms slowly disappearing. Our strawberries were one of the last fruits that we grew here in Garden Grove, and now they're gone. There was a nice little story in the Orange County Register about that, and, you know, this kind of happened on the watch of this previous city council. Mr. Phan, you're excused from that debacle. What I'd like to say is that the Garden Grove that my family had grown up in for generations is now disappearing very fast. Mr. Jones had spoken of rebranding the city several times during his campaign, and I have to wonder if that is rebranding or rebrandywinning the city, as Mr. Jones is our official affiliate from Brandywine Homes here on board, who, that company is luckily enough to receive every contract in our city to build condominiums, and I'm sure that's a very fruitful side job there. But with that said, Garden Grove is being rebranded. And I was on Harbor Boulevard the other day, and I was looking at all these hotels we have, which is pretty much the future of Garden Grove, I guess. And these hotels, they're not called the Ramada Garden Grove, they're not the Marriott Garden Grove, the Sheraton of Garden Grove, they're Marriott Anaheim Resort, Comfort Inn Anaheim South. None of these hotels, which you're all so proud of, even use the name Garden Grove in their title. So, I have to ask if this rebranding, if we're just going to ditch Garden Grove altogether and become Anaheim South, is this the rebranding which you're all so looking forward to? Somebody's phones ringing. Is that you, Peggy? Okay. Well, this rebranding seems like we're just trying to dissolve anything that had to do with our past. Anaheim South has no past, so I guess that's our future. And to kind of quote Princess Leia, "Help us, Chris Phan, you're our only hope." Thank you.
We have nine people that have signed up to be candidates for the seat. Donald Armston, Albert Ayella, Chris Beard, Fat Buoy, Robin Macario, Trung Nguyen, Joe Pack, John O'Neill, and James Abara. All of them gave us paperwork to look at, their background, some of it was really sparse, but I was amazed at the amount of college degrees there. I mean, I just think that seven of those people could easily fill that seat. Two of them I'm a little dubious about, but I won't mention those names. But anyway, Measure B has been brought up a lot this evening, and that has been sidestepped a number of times. In fact, last time it was an open seat. Steve and I tried to push our first choice with Fat Buoy, and he could not... You know, in the Soviet Union, when Stalin stood up on the podium before the Soviet, that's what they called their Congress, they'd start clapping, and then nobody could stop clapping. Nobody wanted to be the first guy when Stalin stood up to stop clapping, you know? So, let's hold the clapping down, and let's get through this, because this is gonna be, one way or the other, it's gonna happen. So, anyway, Fat Buoy, we're talking about him, and Steve and I tried to push him through. He was excited about that, and if it wasn't, he needed a third vote, which he did not get. But he wasn't talking about Measure B then, you know? Robin Macario, I see her bobbing her head, she was talking about Measure B then, and she's not talking about it tonight. So, there's a lot of come and go with this. Anyway, it's open to the council for any comments or any nominations.
Are we there yet? We're just making comments on the oral communication, right?
Yes, you're...
Okay. No nomination until we get to 4B, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I stand corrected.
Okay. I have just a couple of comments in English and then a few words in Vietnamese for some people out here who do not speak English. Thanks, everyone, for applying. I think they're all very qualified applications. It's a very tough decision, but I pray to God that we will be guided by our decisions today. And like Mr. Flores says, we have many views in the city, and not everyone will have the same view, and some will be happy about our decision, and some may not be happy about our decision. First of all, I'm going to ask to speak Vietnamese now. Tôi xin phép nói bằng tiếng Việt. Trái tim của tôi khi mà ở nhà đó là của chồng tôi và con của tôi, nhưng trái tim của tôi khi tôi ngồi trong ghế này á là của cộng đồng của tôi. Tôi lớn lên tại thành phố Garden Grove, toàn bộ cuộc sống của tôi gắn liền với thành phố và cộng đồng thân mến này. Garden Grove có một tài sản có giá nhất, đó là sự đa dạng văn hóa và truyền thống, trong đó có sự đóng góp của cộng đồng người Việt Mỹ. Với kinh nghiệm là một dân cư của thành phố Garden Grove trong sáu năm qua, tôi hoàn toàn thấu hiểu những nhu cầu và sự cần thiết bảo vệ sự an toàn và phát triển của cộng đồng. Tôi rất hẵng diện để hỗ trợ mạnh mẽ các nỗ lực của cộng đồng Việt Nam, nhất là các nỗ lực phát triển tôn giáo và nỗ lực trong cộng sản. Những kiến của tôi trong những năm tới là cải thiện hình ảnh của cộng đồng chúng ta bằng cách tiếp tục duy trì và phát triển những thành quả tốt đẹp đã có để phục vụ cư dân, nhất là trong những thời điểm khó khăn này. Do đó, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm vào chức vụ nghị viên thành phố Garden Grove, nhất định phải có thời gian để tham gia vào những việc của thành phố trong những ngày làm việc hàng, những ngày làm việc trong tuần, và sẽ không vắng mặt khi công việc làm vì công việc làm ở xa. Do đó, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm, nhất định phải có sự hiểu biết về những đau khổ và tệ nạn có thể xảy ra nếu hội đồng thành phố cho phép xây kết sông bài tại thành phố Garden Grove và không tham gia vào các sinh hoạt tiếp đón các nhà thầu xây kết sông bài. Do đó, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm, nhất định sẽ không có những hành động đối nhịp lại với quyền lợi của cộng đồng. Do đó, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm, nhất định sẽ không có những liên hệ với các công ty làm việc dưới sự điều khiển của Đảng Cộng Sản Việt Nam như các công ty chuyển tên về Việt Nam. Do đó, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm, nhất định sẽ không ủng hộ hoặc có liên hệ với các tổ chức hoặc cá nhân nào tiếp đón các thành viên hoặc tổ chức cộng sản Việt Nam như sự tiếp đón của cán bộ Nguyễn Minh Chiết vào năm 2007. Do đó, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm, nhất định phải có khả năng để đương đầu với mô mặt chính trị về và sẽ cân nhắc quyền lợi của cộng đồng chúng ta nặng hơn bất cứ đảng phái nào hoặc cá nhân nào. Cuối cùng, người tôi đề nghị bổ nhiệm, nhất định phải có sự hiểu biết sâu đậm về mục đích của nghị quyết 36 của Đảng Cộng Sản Việt Nam về và cần thiết phải có khả năng để phát giác những sinh hoạt được áp dụng để thi hành nghị quyết 36. Lập trường của cộng đồng này rất rõ ràng, do đó lập trường của người vào chức vụ này cũng phải rất rõ ràng cho những vấn đề nêu trên. Chúng ta cần các nhà lãnh đạo giàu kinh nghiệp để hướng dẫn chúng ta trong những vấn đề rất trầm trọng. Tôi hy vọng quý vị đã chứng nhận rằng công việc của tôi trong sáu năm qua đã đi đôi với những nhu cầu và lập trường của cộng đồng chúng ta. Tôi hy vọng quý vị đã từng chứng kiến sự tự hào của tôi là người Mỹ gốc Việt và sự nhiệt tình của tôi trong sự đấu tranh cho cộng đồng văn hóa, truyền thống và quyền lợi của chúng ta và những người thiếu may mắn tại Việt Nam. Quyết định của tôi ngày hôm nay sẽ gây ra sự mất lòng và buồn phiền cho vài cá nhân, nhưng vì quyền lợi chung và vì sự nỗ lực của Đảng Cộng Sản Việt Nam gần đây để xâm nhập vào cộng đồng Việt Nam hải ngoại, để khai thác cộng đồng này, tôi xin quý vị có lòng tin tưởng trong sự quyết định và nhiệt tình của tôi trong sự bổ nhiệm người vào chức vụ nghị viên thành phố Garden Grove. Xin cảm ơn quý vị.
No, you had your chance.
Well, I didn't know that Mr. Lin was gonna, you know, do what you just did, which I think was the realest thing you possibly could have done. We're in America now, who's gonna translate what you just said?
I can translate it for you.
Okay, I want you to sit down, please. Go ahead.
Okay, I will translate. I have lived in Garden Grove, and I'm a part of this Garden Grove for many years, and it is a loving city to me. In my experience of the six years, six past years, I have responded to the needs of the community by being on this dais and by taking the time that I have to be and serve on the dais of the city council. Oh, by the way, before I started this, I said that my heart at home belongs to my husband and my children. My heart, when I'm on this dais, belongs to the community. My vision for the community, for the future, is to protect what we have now and to develop and prosper what we have for the future. Therefore, the person that I will be recommending for this position would have to have time during the week to tend to the matters of the city and not have to tend to businesses or jobs that are far away from the city. Therefore, the person that I will recommend to this position needs to understand about the harmful effect of a casino in the city of Garden Grove, and should not be promoting the development of a casino in the city of Garden Grove. Therefore, the person that I will recommend to this seat will not go against the interest of the city of Garden Grove. Therefore, the person that I recommend to this position should not have any relationship or promotion of any company that is related to the Communist Government of Vietnam. Therefore, the person that I would recommend to this position would not have the intention of inviting or having any visitors from the Communist Party to visit Garden Grove like the Vice President of Vietnam, Chit Nguyen, in 2007. The reason why I added these two requirements is that I do not believe in another government coming into Garden Grove and try to milk our businesses of their money and bring the money back to Vietnam. I believe in buying Garden Grove and buying Garden Grove. I don't believe in taking our money and businessmen to another country. Therefore, the person that I recommend to this seat shall have the ability to defend the city in all situations and against all parties or any individuals that is going against the interest of the party, of the city. And that is basically what I had to say to the people who don't speak English. And also, I believe that the person in this seat should have experience, and the community should see that the last six years I have, my work have been parallel with the interest of the community, which is development of the city. And to end this speech, my decision today will make some people very unhappy, but it is a decision that I have to make, and I have to make it out of the interest of the community and not the interest of any individual. Thank you. Cảm ơn.
Okay, number 4A is up and I'd like to skip 4A till we have a full council and then we'll make that decision. Let's go to 4B. You had a point, said you had four, five minutes to talk. And you said some things that you were Measure B, Measure B, Measure B. I heard you say them. Now, the truth of the matter is, two years ago, you were totally against Measure B. You wanted to get appointed, and we tried to actually appoint you. And everybody's gonna have a different opinion. She's entitled to have her opinion.
(Các bạn đang nói chuyện với nhau)
I cannot believe this is happening. I want you to sit down, please.
(Các bạn đang nói chuyện với nhau)
I can't believe this. Okay, at this time, we're going to appoint to vacant council member position. I will entertain any discussion or any motions.
Sir, if I may put myself in the line of fire being the new kid on the block. We use that in the military. I'd like to say that I hear what the community is saying, and I've often said this on my campaign trail. Now, when I make this motion, sir, it's not because of any individual. It's because it's the right thing to do. It's what the voter wanted. Therefore, I make the motion, Mayor, to appoint Mr. Fat Boy to the empty seat.
Do I hear a second? The motion failed.
I've already made my speech, and you will know why I made the decision I'm making right now. I recommend Mr. Chris Beard.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Call for the vote. We have four yes votes.
At this time, we can invite Mr. Beard up to the dais.
Mr. Beard, will you please come forward and get sworn in?
We want to let the room clear if it's going to clear. You're free to go.
The second house is now going to take five minutes. Okay, let's go to 4A. We're going to go back to Measure 4A. Selection of Mayor Pro Tem.
I would, can I make a nomination?
Yes, absolutely.
I would like to nominate Deena Nguyen.
We have a nomination for Deena Nguyen. Can we get a second on that?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
We didn't say anything to Mr. Baird, but we're glad to have you back with us. We hope you enjoyed your little vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be back, and I do look forward to working with all of you and completing city business. I want to thank my wife, too. She goes so unrecognized. And we all know being on the council, it's a major part of your life. It's a time commitment, the events, the meetings and such. So I just want to thank her publicly for all her support. You can't do it without a good spouse behind you. Chris, you have a lot to look forward to, and your priority should be, I know, will be the wife first, city next, and the DA are somewhere.
The DA is way down the trail.
I'll ask you if you're a price when it comes to that, Chris.
Good luck. Thank you.
Happy wife, happy life. Don't forget that.
All right, let's go to written communications. There are none. Conduct successor agency business. Let's go to successor. We'll reconvene for a minute.
I'll call to order the summer 11th meeting of the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Member Baird?
Here.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fan?
Here.
First item is 2A, reorganization of successor agency, so selection of chair and vice chair.
Care to do it again?
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Steve Jones for chair.
Thank you.
A second there.
Call the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
Who's our previous chair?
Previous chair?
Yeah. I mean vice chair. I'm sorry.
It's not on here. You got it wrong.
Yeah, well, yeah, that threw me off because we're just member, member, member. You were vice chair before?
I have no idea.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Would you like to remain as vice chair?
Only if Bruce doesn't want it or another council member.
I don't want it.
Okay, I'm happy to assume.
A second there.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I missed what all that was going on.
What's that?
I missed.
We had a nomination for Chris Beard for vice chair to remain.
I second that.
Kathy, it's your job to pay attention.
And find out who the previous one was.
Call the vote, please.
Most receive five yes votes.
Okay, I think you move on to consent items, 3A through 3C.
Who are the consent items?
Second, call the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
We have no public hearings. We'll move on to items for consideration.
Mr. Chair, this item is actually a companion item with the city council item, but we're going to go ahead and give the staff report now. But your council packet has a staff report. It's a purchase and sale agreement between the city and the agency. The former Till Williams property on Harbor Boulevard was purchased by the city. And now that we have this project B2 approved by the Department of Finance, we're going to ask that the agency actually buy it. I hope that's not the staff report, but Greg Brown will fill in a couple more details on this item.
Actually, sounds pretty good, Mr. Fratell, but maybe a little bit more, I guess. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Broadwater, Chairman Jones, City Council, and successor agency members. For your consideration tonight is the adoption of a resolution approving a cooperation purchase and sale agreement between the city of Garden Grove and the city of Garden Grove as successor agency to the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development for the successor agency's acquisition of real property located at 12291 and 12311 Harbor Boulevard and 12292 and 12312 Thackeray Drive. On June 30th, 2006, the former agency entered into a disposition and development agreement with Cam Sang Corporation for the development of a hotel project that required the purchase of these properties. On April 24th, 2012, the successor agency approved the purchase of these properties. The former agency had attempted to purchase these properties over a lengthy period of time during which the seller was not cooperative for a proposed sale. Subsequently, the property owner became willing to sell the property. However, the Department of Finance, California State Department of Finance, to be exact, determined that the DDA was not an enforceable obligation. Due to delays associated with the DOF decision, the seller indicated that they would look elsewhere for a buyer, and as a result, the city proceeded with the purchase in order to ensure that the terms of the DDA could be met. The DDA has now been determined to be an enforceable obligation by the DOF, and as a result, the city is now proceeding with the transfer of the property to the successor agency. The purchase price for the property shall be an amount equal to the purchase price paid by the city in the amount of $2.55 million plus closing costs. Staff recommends that the city council and the successor agency move and approve the recommended actions as outlined in the staff report. That concludes my report, and of course, we're available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does this, in effect, move some money back over from the agency back into the city?
That is correct.
The only caveat here is, of course, this item goes to the Oversight Board tomorrow and then gets forwarded to the Department of Finance. We're not aware that the Department of Finance actually has a required approval of this, but anything that gets sent up to the Department of Finance is subject to some review, and they may have some reason to disallow it. We don't know what it would be. But the transfer of the property is predicated on the DOF not disallowing it and that the monies actually do transfer from the trust fund to the city.
But theoretically, they should ultimately support it since they supported the underlying project that it pertains to.
Correct, and we were. We're anticipating approval, but anything that the Oversight Board does gets reviewed. If for some reason they don't approve this or have some concern and disallow it, we will not make the transfer. The property will stay with the city.
Any other questions or comments? Motion?
Move the recommendation?
Second that.
Most receive five yes votes.
Okay, any successor agency matters from members?
No.
How are we doing with the finance people up there? I mean, are they reneging on anything or...?
We've actually done very well. We probably had over 30 projects and requests, and they approved all of them. You may have been noticed in an email that they did not approve the DDA for what we call the Site C Hotel, the project south of Target. So of all the projects we submitted, they confirmed that they're not going to allow that. But we will continue to work within the framework of the redevelopment law that allows the city to still get possession of the property, and then hopefully, the city may be able to do its own transaction with the hotel developer, and that project can go forward.
And I talked to Senator Correa, we were talking in the room there, and he says that the money intake on the redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California has been a disaster for the state of California. You smile. I smiled when he told me. But I would imagine that they're going to be open for some changes up there, so we ought to really watch it very closely.
And in fact, I heard from the Department of Finance today on the Site C Hotel, although they did not approve it, they said there could always be pending future legislation that might result in more monies coming to the city as relates to that project. So, yes, there seems to be a notion that there'll be some later adjustments that still may favor the city, but overall, we did pretty well.
You know, I don't want to say anything bad about Governor Brown, but certainly, I'm not going to say anything good about him. And, you know, when he was the governor before, they had a freeway project going down Beach Boulevard all the way to Huntington Beach, bought the land, moved people, and then decided they weren't going to do it. And what a disaster. How many billions of dollars did that cost? So this sounds like maybe another reversal for Mr. Brown. I hope. Let's go on. Oh, you done?
Any other comments, or if not, we'll adjourn the successor agency and go back to council.
Okay, we'd like to go to the Industrial Development Authority, please.
I'll show that all members present.
Deena, this is you as chair.
He doesn't have it. I don't have any notes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Your once-a-year meeting. Take charge.
That's why I don't have it. Okay, so we'll now call for the meeting of the Garden Grove Industrial Development Authority. We don't have any oral communication or written communication. We now come to the selection of the chair and vice chair. Have any nomination?
I would make a motion that our new gentleman here on the end did something nobody else ever seen before tonight. We ought to give him the industrial commission.
He was very industrial today. I second that nomination.
Okay.
I gladly accept. Did I vote too?
Yes, yes.
Most receive five yes votes.
I have a nomination for the vice chair.
Well, let's make Chris Baird the vice chair.
Yeah, I second that.
Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Don't get them mixed up.
Most receive five yes votes.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay, we now have the consent items.
Move them.
Mr., you usually would call it out, right? You want me to call it out?
No, it's our annual report, and you do have a resolution for establishing the dates and times and the minutes from last year, so you can make a single motion for that.
Who are the consent items?
Yes.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
Any item for consideration? No? Or none? Matters from the authority members? None? I now adjourn the meeting to next year?
Yep.
Okay.
And Member Fan will take over as the chair.
Okay, let's go on to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, I want the group to pull item A, so it's recommended that items B through F be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
Move the balance. Second.
Call for the vote.
Most receive five yes votes.
Let's go to Measure A.
I am sorry. Yeah. On item A, because both Chris's are employees of the county, they have to at least disclose that before they take action on this, so.
Okay, I'll disclose first. I'm a member of Orange County, Orange OC Community Resources, and it's not affiliated with this particular department or agency.
I just recently got hired on as the deputy district attorney for Orange County, and again, I don't think it has any involvement or association with this issue.
Okay.
Do you want to take the chance, guys?
The, if I may...
Please, Mr. Nixon.
The disclosure is required because of their employment position, but because it does not involve the department in which they specifically work, they are entitled to vote on it should they wish to. So it is not a legal requirement for them to recuse themselves in this situation.
Entertain a motion on Measure A.
Move Measure A.
Second. Second.
Motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Public hearings?
Mr. Mayor, 7A is a public hearing to consider an amendment to a development agreement, and I'll have Mr. Nixon give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before the city council this evening is an amendment to a development agreement relating to the Marriott Suites and Crown Plaza properties on Harbor Boulevard. The original development agreement was entered into in 1998, and it did not include a legal description of the property affected. Subsequently, there was a lotline adjustment between the Marriott Suites property and the Crown Plaza property, and that in itself creates now a little bit of confusion on the title. The only purpose of this amendment is to provide an accurate legal description for the property affected. The owners of both the Marriott Suites and Crown Plaza hotels have requested that this amendment be entered into as it will facilitate any future refinancings of the property. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing, introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance approving the amendment to the development agreement, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement when the ordinance becomes effective. And the ordinance title is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a first amendment to development, excuse me, to the development agreement between Landmark Marriott Suites LLC and the city of Garden Grove. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for staff? Hearing now, at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to address this issue? Hearing now, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what is your... Excuse me.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, item 9A is the companion item to the agency item to purchase the property from the city there on Harbor Boulevard, so it's recommended that the council approve the recommended actions.
Move the recommendation.
We have a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
There are no ordinances presented this evening, matters from the mayor, city council members, city manager. Anybody like to say anything?
Chris, you start.
Yeah, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I look forward to the coming year. Again, look forward to working with you all. Thank you very much.
Dina?
Yes, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Since it's the holiday, try to be safe, and buy in Garden Grove, buy made in USA. And for the next agenda, I'd like to, you know, I wanted to add possibly discussion of... Tom, did I ask you for that ordinance discussion?
You asked me a little bit earlier about a discussion regarding an amendment to the municipal code with regard to administrative citations, which would allow a 30-day period instead of a 15-day period for a person who wants to appeal the issuance of that citation to actually do so, if I understood you correctly.
Right, that, and I'd like to look at the procedure again to make it more easier to understand and for people to respond to it, because with the 15 days, I noticed that a lot of people are not responding within the 15 days, so they have a failure to respond to that and then not make the payment or not contest the hearing. So in the end result, we have an outstanding violation that's not addressed, and also an outstanding bill that's not addressed. So I'd like to bring that back into discussion if it's a legal matter, maybe possibly a closed session, to discuss the details of that.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate you, Mayor Broadwater, on a very decisive victory in your election cycle. You're a natural in that seat, and it's gonna be fun having you at the helm, taking charge and doing what you do. Big congratulations to Chris Phan on just everything. I mean, what a day, what a week, what a year.[1615.04][1615.04](LAUGHING). Look forward to working with you, obviously, and congratulations, Chris, on the appointment. It's good to have you back. I feel very comfortable and proud to be a part of this council, and I think we'll be able to do great things in this city, and I'm really looking forward to the next years to come.
Me, too. Thanks, Steve.
Oh, and thank you so much. I'm so honored to have this opportunity. I was talking to Steve before I got on the DDI's here. I was, he told me you must be on cloud nine. I really am. It's definitely a dream come true for me, having served in the military, having immigrated from Vietnam, growing up in a country where I didn't speak English before, I was nine years old. To have the opportunity to come here and be a part of this wonderful community is heaven sent and a dream come true. Mayor, again, congratulations for an outstanding victory, a reelection. Steve, I look forward to working with you. And Chris, great job coming back on to join us. I just want to explain myself as far as with my vote. I do want to make sure that we follow the wishes of the voters, and so regardless of who it was, Mr. Fat Bowie or whoever else, I think that we should honor the votes that were cast. But, you know, once democracy speaks and, you know, you don't get your way as far as the voting, I am honored to also support my friend, Chris Beard, because I think that he would do a fine job as well, too. And that's the way democracy works. We have our differences, we have our different views, but at the end of the day, we all come together and work as one. So with this opportunity, thank you again, everyone. I want to just have a shout out to all of the community, but also to give recognition to our Vietnamese-American community. I know they've overcome a whole lot, 37 years of struggle and sacrifice, and I want to make sure that I give props to them and thank you from the bottom of my heart for all their love and their respect, and also to the community. And so with this, I want to also say thank you and happy holidays, and God bless. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad the election's over. And believe it or not, I do not like elections, and I like them when I win. That's a good part, but it's not so great with all the aftermath of it. And tonight, what happened was, happens every time that there is a vacant, a councilman goes to the mayor, it happens every time. If someone decides to resign from council, like Mr. Doe did, it happened then, and you never can make people happy, and it's a rough thing to go through, but we sat through it, we make it, and it will, it will pass. And so I just want to thank everybody that was here tonight, and I hope everybody has a great Christmas and a really fabulous New Year. And at this time, we will dismiss the city council until January 8th, 2013, at 5:30 PM.